Sorry about that, everyone.
All right, this is the zoning board meeting. We just opened the public hearing and the applicant is providing rationale for the variance request. Go ahead. Sorry for not starting the recording sooner.
Sure.
Go ahead, Russell.
Okay, so.
Why don't you start with the height is due to what? I missed that part.
So the height is is 25 feet, one inches, except for the brick detail on the side, which is another goes another 10 and three quarter inches above the the rubber roof we're gonna have, the flat roof.
And you said you were gonna have a boat. So what specifically is the rationale for the height?
The height inside the garage, which is 12 feet, and the garage door, which is nine feet, will be able to fit a boat with a tower folded. So that's that's the rationale for that. And then looking for a quiet space with extra storage is the reason for the second floor of the garage. Someplace that I can work without noise from the dog or the kids or interruptions. And as I was saying, I think it does fit in well with the neighborhood. Just in terms of the garage space, we have, you know, two drive, we have four drivers now. So having a two-car garage in the house and then one exterior garage, maybe for a boat and another car, will be very helpful. We had a lot of trouble designing around our lot between, you know, the 20-plus feet that we needed for the sewer line, the side setbacks, which shrink the house and a lot, the street setback, the water level setback. So we really tried to make the most out of the lot that we have. And, you know, I think aesthetically, it will be very nice. And I've had a lot of compliments on that. And in terms of the density for the neighborhood, I think it fits in well, especially with what people are building now in the last two years. Most people do have a detached garage with some kind of room above it. And you could see from my neighbors that he resolved this issue with the bridge making a part of the house. So now, you know, he can Airbnb the two-bedroom apartment he has above his garage. And I didn't want to do the bridge because aesthetically, I didn't think it was very nice, and I think it will be more trouble than it's worth. So that's why we are here.
I would just note the arrival of Paul Reisler.
Oh, good. Hey, Paul. Turn on your camera.
I'm in a dark car.
Oh, okay, all right.
You keep running the meeting, Bob.
All right, I'll keep running the meeting. So Paul, we were just hearing from the applicant. We were just hearing his rationale for the reason for the variance. So he's just described to us the floor plans and the height and the reason for the height. And he's gone on to make some comments about some of the neighboring properties and how others resolved their issues by making a part of the existing house and putting a bridge across, which he didn't want to do. So I think you saw the materials that were sent out, and so you're pretty familiar with the applicants.
I am. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, all right. So.
Russell, can I ask a question about some of the photos of the neighbors? Is your property in any of the photos?
It's the it's the garage in between there, the white garage. That's our property.
Okay, and your house is?
It's it's a small cabin.
Oh, okay. It's not the one with the Tyvek wrap?
No, no, that's my neighbor.
That's the that's the neighbor with the bridge connecting both the house and the garage.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Khan, how high is your house, the main part of the house going to be?
35 feet or just under.
And the other question I have is, why did you increase the height of the garage from 24 to 26? I understand the addition of that a few inches at the top. Why did you go up in height?
I didn't actually go up in height. It was a miscommunication between me and the architect. And again, the height of the of the garage with the rubber roof. Originally, we had a different roof on it, a metal roof. But we decided to go with a rubber roof for several reasons. And so to the top of the rubber roof is 25 feet, one inch. But then the little brick detail gets it to 26 feet.
Now, looking at the inside plans of the second floor. Originally, you had proposed to have a full bathroom. Based on the architectural design that you that you presented in the floor plan, did you eliminate the the shower or the bathtub?
Yeah, we made the office a little bit bigger and just decided to go with a powder room.
And while we're looking at this plan, I assume your storage room is for the mechanicals for a heating system or how is that gonna work?
Yeah, I think it'll be both for because since we can't have a basement in our in our house because of the high water level, we're gonna use that mostly for storage, for boxes and other things. You know, water toys, whatever, what have you. You know, it'll be, you know, it's nice to have a heated storage area for various things.
Looking at some of the elevations, just in regards to Paul, your comment about the stone feature protruding away from the the wall, it looks like it's flush with it. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
That it doesn't extend any further?
No.
Okay. So I think some of Mark's comments were in regards to the height. If 12, 12 foot seven with a nine-foot door, obviously, you can't get the boat in without without that or any taller than nine foot. So the additional three foot seven, I think he was questioning that. Could you explain a little more about the function of how you'd use how you'd use this for a boat?
Well, if you sometimes with a boat, if you want to work on it, you got to put the tower up a bit. And so that'll help us, you know, allow us to do work on the interior of the boat, give us a little more breathing room to to do things. And then we may create some more storage up there if possible above the car that's to the side of the boat. I mean, that's the plan right now.
Okay, so should that be showing on your plans?
It would just be a makeshift kind of shelving.
Both kind of built into the wall or the ceiling?
Yeah, they sell various ceiling-mounted bracket things.
Would there be enough room to work on your boat in your driveway? Or is there not enough room between the road and and the building?
I think it would be very tight, and especially in the off-season, when you do most of the work on the boat, it would be it would be challenging with the weather.
Okay, so you'd work in the boat in the winter, not necessarily in the summer when you'd be using it?
Yeah, usually it's on the lift in the summer.
And then as far as the nine-foot second, second story. Mark, Mark made a comment about that being maybe extra ordinarily tall for a second story. You know, maybe maybe eight feet would be more typical for a second story. I think just reading between the lines in his in his comments. Any any comment on that?
Generally, it feels much more spacious with a nine-foot ceiling. I think eight feet feels a little bit tight under some circumstances. I mean, it just, yes, it could be eight feet. Nine feet, I think, is fine, too. I don't think the one foot, you know. I think it makes a big difference when you're in a room, if it's nine feet versus eight feet, but from the exterior, I think the one foot would probably not make as big a difference. It also allows for some more, you know, window height. You know, we have a nice conservancy across the way from the garage, so we're hoping to get some of that light from the west and south, as well as be able to have a nice view of the conservancy.
Mr. Khan, I have a question concerning the bridge. Your neighbor has a bridge connecting the main part of the house to his two-car garage.
Yes.
You're planning to have two-car garage at the back of your house and then not wanting to have a bridge to connect to the new two-car garage. And why is the opposition to having a bridge? You wouldn't even need a variance if that was the case.
Well, you know, you have to maintain a bridge. My neighbors to the north would not like it very much because it won't look very nice, I don't think. It's costly. There's, you know, several reasons. I mean, you know, do I want to shovel snow off a bridge? Not particularly. I don't know. I just I just, yes, I could do that. But I'd rather not do that.
Well, John, and I think, you know, Mark and Daphne, correct me if I'm wrong, if you do connect that building to the house with a bridge, then the zoning variance would be required as an accessory dwelling unit, correct?
Well, we're not treating this as an accessory dwelling unit, first of all.
Right, but if you connected it with a bridge, then it could be construed as such.
I think it the risk of it being construed as such exists now without the bridge. You know, that's that's a concern. So connecting it with the bridge or not doesn't make it an accessory dwelling unit. Legally, our ordinance says you have to have an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, let's call it. Has to be part of your structure. It can't be a detached structure according to our current zoning ordinance. And then it's limited to a size of 500 square feet, which what's the footprint? Again, it's it's 20 by 20. So this is 520 square feet. Although the full upstairs is probably a little less than that because of the staircase and such. But anyway, but that's not what's before you. The concern, of course, is is I mean, currently, we don't allow an ADU that's detached of any size. If it's attached with the bridge, you know, I think it's a loophole in our ordinance, which is going to be fixed here soon. But at least I intend for it to be fixed. So we've had a structure in downtown Middleton where they used a bridge to connect to get around that rule and then kept the garage under, I'm sorry, the ADU under under 500 square feet. In this, so I'm not sure if I understand your question. Was it John or Paul who asked it? Or no, it's David?
It was Paul.
I think you clarified it, Mark. Thanks.
Hey, Mark, this is Dave. I have a question if I can chime in. Is there isn't there a sewer easement between the house and the proposed garage?
Yes, and the applicant mentioned that as one of the reasons that was creating a challenge for where how they could design the garage and not have it be attached to the house. Yes.
But my question would be if there was a bridge between the two, if there was construction or work that needed to be done on that sewer, would that easement allow for that bridge to be torn out at the owner's expense?
We, I don't remember the height, but we've allowed bridges, we being the Public Works Department, the city engineer. He's wanted them to be a certain height. Maybe Daphne knows that answer, but he's wanted it to be a certain height to allow the work to be done beneath the bridge. It would not necessarily have to be removed. There, I think there's been license agreements to allow that to happen.
Okay, even though a backhoe may have to get in there and then you have to.
Well, I, Daphne, do you happen to know more about that right now? Or you didn't research that?
Yeah, so what the other houses along Middleton Beach Road have is they have like an easement agreement, and that has to go through like Public Works Committee, and that that committee has to approve of that agreement. I believe the height is 10 feet from, you know, the ground.
Right.
So that that bridge would have to be 10 feet up in order for them, you know, to get the backhoe and any other machinery they need in there. And so if he did go with the bridge option, you know, he would have to go through the Public Works Committee, get the easement agreement, and then make sure that bridge is at least 10 feet above the ground.
And that's that's, thank you. And then my other question would be, is the neighboring house with the bridge, it appears the rough height is at least 25 feet, if not higher. Do we know that for a fact?
Well, that's the thing. When you have an attached structure, then you're not limited to that 15-foot height. Our ordinance says specifically a detached garage has to can't be higher than 15 feet measured to the midpoint of the highest gable, or in this case, 15 feet to the top of the flat roof.
Yeah, no, I get that. But is there, I mean, it's pretty consistent with what the neighbor's doing as far as the height, as it looks to me.
Understood. The bridge, you know, again, the bridge makes it attached and without the bridge, the applicants need a variance. And that's, you know, why they wouldn't want the bridge. I get that. Cost is really not the key factor here. It's really design and function are more.
As far as aesthetics, I don't think he's creating a hardship that is going to impact the neighbors worse than the one that's already there.
Mark, this is Katie. Are you calling it an ADU because they have plumbing?
I I'm not calling it that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Yeah. I, we were, our concern, and we've dealt with this issue on Middleton Beach Road, as well as other parts of the city, but especially Middleton Beach Road. Because we don't allow ADUs and detached units, we've been telling people you can't have a full bathroom and a full kitchen. You know, to try and dissuade the use, discourage the use as an ADU. So until our ordinance changes, which you will find, I think, that being proposed coming few weeks and months, until that changes, we can't allow ADU-type functions in.
Got it. Didn't we have a variance that came before this board, pre-COVID, on Hubbard Avenue with a detached garage with a home office above?
On Hubbard with the home office. Oh, you're talking about Eric, I think the one next.
Eric and Christine, yep.
Yeah, and they did not put in a full, in fact, the bathroom is downstairs, as I recall.
That one, Mark, that one was the, there's the garage and then the the office and bathroom was actually behind the garage.
And then upstairs is storage.
They didn't have upstairs for that.
Are you sure?
Yeah, it's a pretty tall garage.
Anyway, it's we're dealing with this case here.
Yeah, no, I understand. But I'm 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 now asking if they did this office on ground level. I'm assuming then they're going over their allotment of percentage of non-permeable. Okay.
Yeah, that if you create a bigger footprint, which is maximum lot coverage is 35%, I wouldn't be surprised that that would, they would be, I don't know what your lot coverage is, but you're probably very close to 35% because these small lots and the type of houses that go up there typically push that 35%.
Got it.
Mr. Khan, I have one final question for you, and that is, could you articulate exactly what your hardship is in requesting the variance? Because that's typically how we have evaluated these variances.
Yes, I believe I did.
Could you say it again?
Yes. Well, I can.
No, the question is, is can you articulate for the board?
I can read, you can read the letter I've written if you'd like. So our non-conforming late front lot forces many limitations when trying to design this home. We would like to use the second floor of the garage for a quiet home office and for storage, as we are limited in other areas of the property. Because our shoreline property has such a high-water table, it prevents us from having a basement. The sewer line, which runs across our property at an angle, prevents us from building on a 20-foot swath or an 800-square-feet swath of land. The sewer line limitation drastically limits the design of our home. And our limitations for our lot include setbacks, especially the side setback, which is side setbacks can initiate a 40-foot lot under 31 feet of width, which puts limits on design and function of the structures. In addition, the space above the detached garage will be used for a home office, which would work best as a quiet space.
Something's changed with your microphone.
We're not hearing you, Russell.
Oh, I didn't touch it. I'm sorry.
There you go. That's much, much better. Now it's muffled again.
Is it helpful if I speak louder?
Now you're good.
Okay, our, so our non-conforming lakefront lot forces many limitations. We'd like to use the second floor garage as a quiet space as we are limited in other areas of the property, because our shoreline has such a high-water table. We can't put in a basement, which is often a spot you'd use for a home office. The sewer line runs across our property and prevents us to build on 800-square-feet of land or 20 feet at least, but it ends up being a lot more than that because it's at an angle. It also limits the design of the home. Our limitations for our lot setbacks, especially the side, limit it to under 31 feet of width. And that limits the design and function. In addition, the space above the detached garage will be used for our home office and storage, which would work best as a quiet space. As this is a common practice on our street, there have been no incidents of danger, and it is not contradictory to the public interest. We think it fits in with aesthetics, and all of our neighbors have agreed that it would be okay to do this, and they don't think it would impede their 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 property or their style of living. We could put in a garage, as we said, I mean, a bridge or a causeway, but I think it would block our neighbors' light, need maintenance, be expensive, get in the way of any future sewer repairs. That's our hardship. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we were able to hear you.
Great, thank you.
So one, one quick question that I have. Obviously, you've got a boat that has a tower, and I'm not really familiar with what a tower is. It sounds like it's a ski boat.
Yeah, it could be a tower or a sailboat, which has a sail. I mean, either.
A sailboat in a trailer with the mast down would be not anywhere near 12 feet high. What I was wondering is how tall is your boat in a stored position?
I don't can't say exactly. I think it's it's a somewhere around nine feet. It just fits in the door.
Oh. How tall is your garage door?
Nine feet.
Okay. So the nice-to-haves are the extra height to be able to stand up in your boat in your garage and an extra foot above what's normal for a residential living room or office or whatever. So you're asking for, in my opinion, a few more feet that are convenient? We'll just leave it at that. Maybe not quite yet a hardship, but that's just a personal thought. And I guess before we get into deliberations, does anybody else on the board have any other questions for the applicants? I think we've had pretty good conversation here and want to make sure that we get into the discussion part. So here, hearing none, the, what is it, Mark, the public hearing is closed. Is that right?
Yep, you're closing the hearing.
Closing the hearing. So I think it's time now that we discuss the merits of the request.
I completely agree with your sentiment with the additional feet being a hardship. I agree that it's aesthetically pleasing, but it's I have a hard time with new construction, especially when the new construction is three stories. So no, you don't have a basement, but you have a garage and two stories above it. So essentially, it could be a basement, right? And then, yeah, that that extra height, that, yes, it's a nice to have, but is it is it really a hardship? Like, I tend to agree with you there as well.
I would agree. But to be clear, we're talking about a request to have the highest point at 26 feet when the height to the midline of a gable is 15 per the zoning ordinance. Is that right, Mark?
If it were a gable roof, it would be the midpoint of the highest gable, but our ordinance also defines building height with respect to other roof types, including a flat roof. And obviously, a flat roof is easy to measure. You just go to the highest point.
So what is, what would that height be?
Well, it would be 15 feet. Let me, I'll just read the ordinance for you. Andy here, I just the building height is distance to be measured from the mean ground level immediately adjoining the front of the structure to the top of the cornice of a flat roof or to the deck line of a mansard roof or to the point on the roof directly above the highest wall of a shed roof or to the uppermost point on a round or other arch-type roof or to the midpoint of the highest gable on a pitch or hip roof. So for this type of roof, it's the cornice of a flat roof, and that height is 15 feet.
So the request is to exceed the
26.
To go from 15 to 26, so nine, nine vertical feet.
And the reason this came before you with instead of 24 feet and 26, they realized in the course of further communication with the architect that they either there had been a misunderstanding or a mismeasurement or something like that. And so when they discovered that it was a little taller, that we made them go through this extra hurdle, and they paid another fee, by the way, for that.
So were they given the variance for the 24?
No, it was postponed because the action at the last meeting was to provide additional details regarding floor plans, the detailed structure and residence, and to have a section cutting through the detailed, the detached structure showing dimensions with heights. So you'd asked, they had asked, the board had asked for more information, which, yeah, which I think they've provided.
Absolutely.
Mark, what is, what will be the height of the home that's going to be constructed there?
It sounds like it's almost 35 feet, three stories, almost 35 feet, which is entirely their right. That's legal.
Okay.
There's other homes on the street, too, that are approaching that height. They, you know, they oftentimes look a bit blocky. But but that is something our code allows citywide.
Sure. And so if he, if he attached this garage via this bridge or whatever it would be, we wouldn't be here talking about a variance, right?
Well, then theoretically, they, right, then theoretically, they could have a two-story structure without without a variance, right?
I'd hate to promote bridges to every garage from from home, though. I think that would not be a a good thing in the city's interest.
And I agree, that is kind of an eyesore. I I just, I look at this garage thinking it's lower than the house. It's going to be obstructed in front of it. And I have a hard time believing that we're going to quabble over a foot or two, but I could be wrong. I'm standing to be corrected.
Well, I think the, I think the issue here is that if we approve this structure and this height, we're going to be creating a precedent.
Well, I think each, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. I think, I think we have to take each case on its own merits, but that being said, there there are a lot of, a lot of these types of variants coming through on the board. So it's, it's tough because I think, like, if this was a side yard setback, we we look to make sure they minimize it's, it's tough, because I, I think, like, if this was a side yard setback, we, we look to make sure they minimize the, the request of encroachment, right, we, if, if they're adding a, let's say, a toilet room or a bathroom, you know, it's not absorbing pretty big, they didn't go out of their way to just gobble up this extra square footage. And so I'm, I'm kind of trying to apply that to this height variance as well. You know, thirteen, what is it, twelve foot seven room for a garage just seems kind of very large. And then nine foot upper, and then add a nine foot upper ceiling or upper level on top of that. And, and you're right, it probably doesn't, you know, affect, it won't affect the, the, the aesthetics from the outside very much, a couple of feet. But when, when does it, when does it get to be too much, right? If somebody has a twelve foot ceiling and then wants a a second story with a gabled inside, um, that would put this, you know, higher up, so.
Even if the, the lower level and the upper level, you took out four feet, they'd still be asking for about a six foot variance.
Right, correct, that's true, that's very true. Yeah, there's no way to get a, a full second, second story with fifteen feet. Usually, when we've seen it able to happen, it's with a, with a gabled roof and that, the ends are like, you know, four feet, three feet, they're little knee walls on the sides.
I think I'd be more sincere about this current concern about a height if the neighbor behind was being blocked, but apparently the neighbor behind, and I drove, drove over there and looked at this, is a conservancy that is vacant. So it isn't blocking anybody.
Yeah, I think we have to be a little cautious of, is this a hardship for the owner, or is this not a hardship for other people?
Correct, I, I agree with that.
We have to look at it, is this a hardship for the owner?
Well, the owner, I think the owner could have a, uh, office on the first floor and then have storage above and stay within the height limit.
And, and not have the, yeah, the second garage. I think that kind of takes me back to my three-story house comment earlier, where it's new construction, there's already a quite, what seems to be a quite large house, and then we're putting this, proposing to put this quite large, two-story accessory building. I mean, I think the hardships of the.
This is Paul, and I guess I've been struggling with, with the size and the height, and, uh, you know, to the prior comment, is there a way to accommodate an office on the first floor, uh, to avoid that, that additional height to the garage?
But didn't we, uh?
That's a very, that's a very good question.
But does that enlarge their footprint?
I don't think it would enlarge your footprint.
Well, I guess we don't know what the lot area coverage would be if the first floor had grew a little bit to accommodate an office on that lower level.
Daphne, do you have that calculation by chance of the original lot coverage?
Um, I don't have it offhand, let me see if I have it.
Do you want me to see if I can look it up? When I, I look, since you're sharing your screen, why don't I, I'll, I'll look for it.
Yeah, I think the issue that they're going to have is, um, it looks like they're very close to the easement on the, um, east for those, um, sewer line easement, or what is, I forgot what that was.
Yeah, that's a sewer line.
Yeah, so it looks like they're pretty close there. I'm not sure about the front setback, but in order to actually use their second of their, their attached garage, they'd need some way to get back there, right, so if they'd add the um, office to the south of the, the garage, I don't know that they'd have enough space to make it around.
And don't we also have to consider the style of the house as well?
As far as.
When you're talking about keeping this garage one story versus two?
I think the way the ordinance is written, fifteen feet is a height for a flat roof.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, that's the design that they've brought forward. They could go taller with a gabled roof.
But again, that wouldn't fit their architectural style.
Correct.
Um, would it be easier to swallow if it was four feet less and it was still a variance of for six feet? Would it be less egregious for you guys to vote on it that way?
That's an interesting, and it's a good question, um. I don't know, I appreciate the design and I appreciate the functional value of having the head height working on a boat. Um, you know, those, those things I, I clearly understand, um, and I don't know if four feet matters or not, um. I, yeah, I, I think that we're looking at a, a design here that's fitting the floor area to side area ratio, we don't have anything other than a height limitation, and we're on a street that's every property on this street has a variance.
Daphne, I, I, and I worked, I could not find the permit. Do you, maybe if you could look for it, I, I just searched on two-two-two-seven.
Um, they haven't submitted a zoning permit yet because they wanted to get a variance first for it, because depending on the variance, they'll be.
Oh, I see, okay.
Change the design of the house as well.
Oh, okay.
Um.
I, I, for some reason, I thought the house was under construction, so none of this is under construction.
Yeah, that, I believe that white house that you saw in the pictures might still actually be there. Um, so, you know, they'll be, you know, completely rebuilding a new house.
Yeah, got it, thank you. So, so we don't know the lot coverage calculation, in other words?
Um, I believe I did do a calculation, I just had it like written down somewhere and I misplaced it, but, um, it was, I made sure that it was under the thirty-five percent as this is right now. Um, but, yeah, I don't remember, you know, how close it was to, like, if it was thirty-four point nine percent or something like that. Um, but this plan as it is right now is under that thirty-five percent.
And I know we don't, uh, count the, uh, the driveway or the asphalt is
Right.
Um, part of that, but just looking at this, there's going to be a lot, a lot of asphalt. And the only actual pervious part are going to be the side yards and the, the backyard.
But we can't fault them on that right now, because.
No, no, you're, yeah, that's how it's written, I just, yeah, it's going to be a lot of impervious area.
Do we have, uh, enough conversation about the merits to enter, to hear a motion or entertain a motion?
And I would, and I would just give you a little bit of guidance, so you're not obligated to approve the plan exactly as presented, I mean, you have the option of accepting the variant, granting the variance as presented, or, or choosing some lesser amount as opposed to denying the variance, so you can do anything that's up to twenty-six. Uh, you can't go over that, then, nor are they requesting that, obviously. Um, so your options are, are not, I just want to make it obvious to you that, you know, just for the, for the benefit of the applicant, for understanding here, you're not wedded to this exact plan. If there were some modifications you wish to see, that would be an option too, or of course, you have the option to deny the variance.
Thank you for the clarification, um. I don't know how, how much difference that makes to opinions for the members of the group here, but, um, we can talk about it.
Mark, could you state the choices again?
So, the action for you tonight is, is a, a request to act on a variance request for twenty-six feet, a twenty-six foot garage, a garage up to twenty, well, a garage of, of twenty-six feet in height, uh, which would be a variance of eleven feet. If you feel that the hardship case has not been made for a variance of that height, you can approve a variance still tonight of a lower height, or your other option is just to, you know, if you feel that there's no case made for, uh, uh, no hardship basis for, um, granting a variance at all, then you can deny their, sorry, that didn't come out very well, so, in other words, you can approve the plan as submitted, or something a little bit less, or nothing at all, I mean, those are your options. And just to real quick, uh, when you were discussing a little bit about the hardship, your interpretation of it, uh, I kind of dropped service a little bit, could you just very quickly, uh, just kind of give me a synopsis of what your comment was?
Not my comment, sorry, Paul.
Yes.
Oh, um, trying to remember. Um, I think it's, so that, we run it across this a lot, right, narrow lot line, the low water table, um, and then that easement, the, the, a couple things that I find kind of odd are, no, they can't have a basement, but it's a three-story house, so, you know, you don't really ever see a three-story house with a basement. It, it, I guess it, it's not like it can't happen, it's just, you don't see many of those types of houses, so, to me, the no storage, um, because of the low water table, I, I kind of find that hard to believe. Um.
Got it. Right, and I think to that point, you know, you know, you're looking at the hardship, uh, you know, they're asking for three additional feet basically on that first level, and then more height on the, on the second level, which, you know, it's, you know, I guess, uh, you know, where do we draw the line? You know, is that four feet make a difference or not?
Yeah, and I, I was trying to, you know, think of this as a side, um, setback, and in those cases, you know, we, we look at something and are they trying to minimize their encroachment on that, that side setback? In a respectful way and not just taking, you know, the whole thing, um, for convenience or, or whatnot. Um, I think this, it really comes back to Bob's cat comments about, you know, these extra square footage, yeah, they're nice to haves, but is that really a hardship to not have a nine-foot upper level and have a twelve foot seven gar- you know, garage, is that, is that a hardship?
I don't think, I don't know. I don't think that is a hardship.
Well, I guess I can see the point of, if you're going for a variance, go for what you want.
Well, and I see this hardship, if there was no sewer easement through this property, this garage would get attached and they'd have a four-car garage, and it might be about nine feet lower than the thirty-five foot house, so, yeah, so now it's about thirty feet away from the house, and it's the same thing. And if they attach the bridge, which might be the answer in the long run, they could do it anyway. So, I, if we're going to quibble about four to six feet over this thing, I think it's either, yeah, in my opinion, it's either denial or, or we accept the plan. I think they've done a pretty good job to make it fit in the neighborhood, and it's still no higher or maybe less than the neighbor to the, uh, to the right of it, when you're standing in the street. I don't know, I just, yeah, I, I think they've got a legitimate request here, because of, in my opinion, these lots are substandard, but also this sewer easement really makes a challenging effort for anybody that lives down there.
Just seems to me that if we approve the variance as requested, we're going to be setting a precedent for any other requests going forward. And the question is, is that something we want to do? I understand that each individual situation is an individual situation, but somebody could come back, okay, in the future and request the exact same thing using this, okay, as a rationale. I don't see where, what is being proposed here is a hardship. I understand, okay, that he wants a four-car garage, you know, two and, two and two, and I understand he wants a nice office on the top, that's fine. But part of his rationale is, is he needs room for storage because there is no basement. If you really want to take this to the extreme, the lower level of what he wants to build here, uh, detached, bottom level could be the office. And he could have a certain amount of storage above it and stay within the fifteen feet height limit. I mean, I understand, you know, uh, Mr. Khan wants what he wants, I, I, I get that, I would want what I want too. Question is, is whether or not it's something that we can really look at as being a hardship. That's my opinion.
I think we've, uh, probably heard the two opposing thoughts on this, is anybody ready to make a motion?
I will move that we approve this variance.
And the hardship described?
With the hardship being the sewer line running through the property and with the narrow lot and with the desire for space for the boat.
So I hear a second.
I'll second.
Sewer line and narrow lot, and who's seconded?
Dave, don't, yeah.
Okay, um, we, we need to have a quick discussion here about who is voting, uh, because now we have, um, six people present.
Well, then I, I should back off then.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm just wanting there to be a discussion, is anybody planning to abstain? Uh, for any reason? If the answer is no. How many people do you need to vote, Mark? Well, we can't, we can't have six people voting. Okay. And there's six people present, and we are glad that you joined us and you're the chairperson. Right, and I'm thinking because I joined and I'm in a car, I would recuse myself from voting. Okay. Okay, in that case, then we are, then that's what I wanted to clarify, so then, then Dave, it's appropriate for you to second the motion, which is what you were doing, so. Very good.
Okay, so we have, uh, a motion that's been seconded, can we have a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Oh. Hey.
Oppose?
It's, it's.
Say. Oh.
Right. So I heard, was, was it, let me do a roll, well, I think I heard two to three as the vote.
I think that's right.
Okay, if you're ruling it that way, then, then there would have to be another motion. All right, so the motion fails, you have to announce that the motion fails.
So the motion has failed.
Right.
So I move that we pass the variance with, uh, lower ceiling height for the garage based on the same hardships of the narrow lot, the sewer line.
What height are you, you should have a, specify the height.
I propose, so help me out, um, if it's twenty feet, that's still, is that enough for an eight-foot ceiling and eleven feet for the garage?
I think.
Eleven, eight feet for the office and eleven for the garage? Or is it, is that?
There's a foot in between, right, that.
Right, but my eight and eleven is nineteen.
Yeah, you, you don't have enough in there, I think, um, the door to the garage is nine feet high, and then you probably need another twelve inches above that for the garage door to roll back, uh, so I think, um, probably ten feet is the minimum clear height for the garage. Probably ten feet is the minimum clear height for the garage. So that's two feet less. Then, and then the office floor, you can't go less than eight. So you could take three feet off of twenty-six. Could go down to twenty-three.
I move that we give the variance for twenty-three feet, given the same hardships.
Go here a second.
I would second that.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
So it sounds like it carried four to one.
John, that was you voting against it?
Three to two.
Three to two, I think.
Oh, was it three to two? Okay.
So John and, uh, Dave, you voted against it?
No, I voted for it.
Justin and, and John.
John.
Okay. And, and the first one was Nelson and Schultz voting for it and the other three voting against it. Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so that motion has passed then.
Passes three to two, yep.
This is three to two, okay.
Is, I think, the first three to two vote we've had in favor. And until a few years ago, that would not have passed, uh, would have required four votes, but the state law changed, so. Because state law changed to allow a simple majority, uh, it passes. Little bit of zoning insider.
Are your zoning history buffs?
All right, so you have, uh, so to the applicants, you have, uh, a received approval for a garage height up to twenty-three feet. And how that space is configured internally is, is up to you, but it's a total height is twenty-three feet. Bob, go ahead. I, I think you're ready to move on to a German.
Okay, so I, I thought Russell was trying to say something and it sounded like he was muted, but, uh. I guess we're done for this evening, so this meeting is adjourned at six oh one PM.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Don't we have, don't we have to add a motion?
To adjourn, if you want to do that, that's fine.
I move adjourn.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Everyone, have a good night.
Night.